Well, I have a minute after. Shall we go ahead and call a meeting to order?
I'm good.
You want to call a roll call, please?
Hankins?
Here.
Triplet?
Here.
Dietz?
Here.
Olfest?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item three, approval of the agenda. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look it over. Do you have a motion to approve?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Approved. No, same sign? Okay. Jenna's approved. Are there any attendees here on, from the audience that have something they want to say about anything that's not on the agenda? And Jenny, did you receive anything from anyone that we should be aware of at this time?
No, sir, I have not.
All right, thank you. Item number five, approval of the commission meeting minutes for June 15th. Are there any, any comments, corrections, amending, or so on? If not, if we have a motion to move, to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. No, same sign? Okay, our minutes are approved. And now, we get on to the meat of the evening. Item number six, consider recommendation to council to approve Lakeside Fellowship Church Site Plan Amendment. Is there a person attending to speak to that?
Jason McElroy from our church will speak to that.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Jason, I can't, I can hear just barely. Well, I heard you're well, pretty good.
Yeah, that came in better.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so Jason McElroy, do you need my address information, or?
Right name and, and address.
5250 Northwest 126th Avenue, Polk City.
Thank you.
Here representing Lakeside Fellowship. So, what we'd like to do is on the north side of the building there, from what you can see right in that screenshot, we've got two large rooftop units that are sitting on the ground for HVAC. We would like, like to enclose that with a six-foot privacy fence, PVC fence, so it's low maintenance. We went through some color selection, worked with our architects, so we've got a color that matches both the brown and the blue shade that's in the building quite well. To screen that area, screen those HVAC units, we've had some issues when we've had soccer games with some kids actually crawling on top of those units. So, we're concerned about the safety of them from that aspect, as well as we've had them actually shut off. At one time, the power just got switched off. I suppose it was a switch that kids thought was fun to play with. And then, enclose that and just gravel the, the space in between those two and use it for some, some storage for some small items outside.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve this application?
I'll make a motion that we recommend a council approval of the site plan amendment for the Lakeside Fellowship Church, subject to city staffs and engineers' comments dated June 19th, 2020.
Second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any, any further comments? If not, roll call vote, please.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Olfest?
Okay. That is approved. And we'll move on to item number seven, consider recommendation to council to approve Creekview Estates Plat One Final Plat. Is there someone to speak to this application?
Yeah, Josh Strickston, Civil Design Advantage, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Grimes, Iowa. On behalf of North Polk Development, we're requesting the approval of Creekview Estates Plat One Final Plat. The site consists of 30.46 acres, is located at the southwest corner of Third Street in Hug. And the first plat actually includes 48 single-family lots, one lot for detention pond, eight outlots tied to budding lots, and then, three outlots for future development. The only reason that was broken up to three outlots was just in case that future development was ever phased. As for staff or Snyder's comments, we're in agreement with everything except for item number one concerning the relocate all PUEs outside the city's sanitary sewer easement. We need to have some further conversations with Mike on this, just because ultimately what would happen is we're providing a 20-foot sanitary sewer easement. If we push those PUEs out to right up to that building setback, we have concerns that there might be conflicts when they go to construct the homes. What we proposed was overlapping the outside 10 feet, just to pull it back from that building setback line. However, as Snyder will, or Kathleen will allude, we're still in those conversations. The other remaining outstanding comments, we will address as constructions being completed. Currently, the site's still needing a little grading and pavement. All the utilities are installed. I believe all the testing's been done on the utilities. It's just a matter of getting the site paved. We realize that we've kind of bringing this to you guys a little premature, but we anticipate that paving and improvements to be complete prior to the next P&amp;Z meeting. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments, questions from the commission?
How deep's the sewer in that area?
It ranges from 20 feet deep to standard 12 feet. And we're given appropriate easements. The sewer, to eliminate conflicts, we placed the sewer right behind the sidewalk or right on the right-of-way line, just to eliminate conflicts with ever a storm sewer. Honestly, if this comment about the overlapping PUEs had came up earlier during the plumber plat, or even the construction plans, we'd have looked a lot closer about putting that closer to the storm sewer within right-of-way, but it's kind of after the fact.
Yeah, just, this is Kathleen. Can you hear me?
You're a little broken up.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to let you know, this is typical standard practice for the city to have the PUEs lying outside the sanitary sewer. We don't see the PUE information until the final plat stage, so we don't really have a way to comment on it. Again, this is, CDA has done other plats for the city and they've all, the requirements always been for them to be outside of the easement. I just, Mike is on vacation for two weeks, and so we don't have the opportunity to talk this through with him. There's been some occasions where they've done encroachment into sanitary sewer easements, but it's only by agreement of whoever the party is doing in the encroachment. So, I just, that's the concern I have, is I don't know that American Energy would be willing to sign an encroachment agreement the same way that we've had for, like, monument signs, for example, that have encroached in sewer easement. So, we have a little bit of work, work to do on this.
Okay, so, what, what you're asking is to have the, these other easements overlap? The city sanitary sewer?
Just the public utility easement is what they're proposing. It doesn't have to be decided tonight. Again, I, I think it's, we need to have input from the Public Works Director before this issue's resolved. So, I guess I would say that it just, that your motion would include resolving this as one of the items that are outstanding to be resolved before it goes to council.
Well, should this be resolved before we even do anything with this?
I, I don't, I think, I mean, I think it would be subject to. I mean, the easement just, they'll either need to show it where, you know, they've got it shown right now where it's overlapping the outside 10 feet of the sanitary sewer easement. So, really, the only other option is that they would revise it or on their show it completely outside the sanitary sewer easement.
Okay, my question then is, so, so we approve it subject to, and then you're not able to resolve it? Then where are we?
We're still going to council. So, we're in agreement with how Kathleen is approaching it, approving it condition of resolving it. We just want to have additional conversations with Mike. Ultimately, council's going to be the final say, this is a recommendation commissioned. So, prior to going in front of council, we'll have a resolution, one way or the other.
Okay, are there any other questions or concerns from the commission?
I guess where I am on it is, I would feel comfortable approving it as a review comment that needs to be resolved, as we commonly do. And that the, then the only way that that review comment cannot be resolved is if city staff, the engineer, and council agree to resolve it otherwise. And I think that's common with really any of the, of the engineers' comments.
All right. Any other concerns or questions?
I just have, I have one just real brief comment, and that is when we approved the, the original plat review, or the preliminary plat review, we kind of did it in its entirety with not having a good understanding as far as how this may be phased. I'm a little concerned in that the way it is going to be phased, that construction traffic using GPS coordinates and things could easily be routed through Wolf Creek Town Home Development, which can be done on public streets, that you know your way around in there, but also could be wandering onto private streets within that town home development. I know in the Lost Lakes Development, when it was built up in northwest Polk City, there were signs placed on some of the accesses to other streets, in particular, Jester Park Drive at that point in time, directing construction traffic to go up to Falcon. I'm kind of wondering if that should be recommended here, where the access points into Wolf Creek Town Homes should have some sort of signage directing construction traffic up to the West Trace Place access on the north, so that the construction traffic for this development is being handled by the streets of this development. And I'm just curious if anybody else sees that as a concern.
Ron, this is Kathleen again. I can coordinate with Mike Schulte on that. It was, the city was the one who placed those restrictions that you referred to in Lost Lakes, so I can coordinate with Mike on that.
Okay. I, I don't live in Wolf Creek, but I do live in a town home development with private streets, and we don't like to have a lot of construction traffic that's not necessary on our, on our private streets.
Yeah, the, yeah, there is only the two entrances into that project right now, the one off of Hug and then one through the development that's already there.
Commission, Josh again with CDA. Really quickly, we did include a phase line on our plumber plat, and this still matches that actual Phase One. So, these were the two connection points that we proposed for Phase One. When I alluded to the other three outlots, that, that's just kind of, the reason those are separated is because we connect two stubs, or we connect to Third Street. That's just why those are broken up that way.
Well, if there are no other...
Can I ask, can I ask one question too? And I was just wondering, who maintains the waterway that would be not on this property, but where this detention pond drains through north of West Trace now, it's going to be more, I'm sure the water drains through there now, but it's going to be much more focused and probably heavier if that gets eroding in there. Is that an issue for this development, or is that under another maintenance agreement? Or how, does any, Kathleen, do you know how's that handled in there?
Well, I, Josh can speak to the design. The design is, the detention basin is to have sufficient erosion protection that the velocity is reduced, so it should not, should, it is not, you know, shouldn't erode. But there is an overland flow easement in Wolf Creek Town Homes that this would flow through.
Yep, so yeah, Josh again. As you can see on the final plat and page one, that, that existing channel is, as Kathleen alluded to, well, it doesn't call it the overland easement, but that existing channel is located in an outlaw. I'm assuming that outlaw is ultimately owned by Wolf Creek Town Homes Association, so it'd probably be on them. Now, just circling back to the stormwater management, the point where we're discharging was already kind of a concentrated flow. This area kind of bonded up in a small depression and overflowed into this channel, so all of the site that we're discharging to was already going down that channel. And our stormwater management of this site is actually throttling back that flow to actually be less than the, the rainfall events, less than or equal to the rainfall events. And when I say equal to, those are for more of the one-year or the smaller events. When I say less than, when we're talking about the almighty 100-year storm, like 7.12 inches or seven inches of rain in 24 hours. So, in reality, I hope there's less, but we also had to add protections where that pipe actually discharges, there is an energy dissipation of riprap, just to help break up that water, so it's not flowing out at extreme velocities and just eroding the channel bank.
Right. Okay, it's, that's answers my question, thank you.
Yep. Well, I had, I did have one more question here. This will be a, an association, in other words, will this be the, like a town home association where the exterior is managed by an association? Or is it going to just be regular individual, single-family residences?
This will, this is not a, there'll, there'll be an association associated with this project, but the individual lots and home construction and all that will be on the individual homeowner.
Okay.
The only reason for the association is to maintain the, I guess, neighborhood element, which is that stormwater management.
Right, okay, gotcha, thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns from the commission? Is not motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend a council approval of the Creekview Estates Plat One Final Plat, subject to staff and engineers' comments dated, comments and recommendations dated July 17th, 2020.
Did you want to make any other, any others regarding the sanitary sewer, or that should all?
I, I do not want to make any additional items, believing that, that staff and engineer and council can resolve that issue.
Thank you.
And if they don't resolve that issue, then it stands as is.
All right, thank you. Is, is there a second?
One second.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Olfest?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Dietz?
All right, that will be passed on to council.
Thank you, commission.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, let's see, item number eight, consider recommendation to council to approve 12 Oaks Plat Three Final Plat. Someone here to speak to that application?
Hi, Chris Thompson here, Department of Forestry and Associates, 475 South 50th Street, West Des Moines. This is just the final plat here for 12 Oaks, as you said, it's 28 lots.
We're having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry, can you?
Is this working for you now?
Yeah, that is better, I think.
Okay, so this one, the construction on this has been going on for a while due to some problems in the field, but it's buttoned up now. I believe all staff comments have been addressed, and it's 28 lots on roughly 11 acres.
It's, can you hear me, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, it's 29 lots, Chris.
Sorry, it is 29.
Yep. We got paving and we're backfilling, so things are finally looking good up there.
Yeah. Are there any questions or comments, concerns from the commission? How about Kathleen, or any comments, questions you might have?
No, no, they've, on this one, they've addressed all the comments and it's moving forward. The legal documents are actually in process, so as soon as the curb is being backfilled, we'll hold a walkthrough and it'll move it forward to council. So, this one's a little farther along than the last one.
All right. Well, if there aren't any further comments or concerns from the commission members, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend a council approval of the 12 Oaks Plat Three Final Plat, subject to staffs and engineers' comments and recommendations dated July 15th, 2020.
Second.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Vogel?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Olfest?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, application will move forward.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine, consider recommendation to council to approve rezoning 206 East Broadway from C1 to R, C1 and R2 to PUD. Is there someone to comment to this application?
Hi, this is Kyle Haupt, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good. Yeah, I'm just trying to, I bought the property, and the way it is zoned doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense for commercial along there, and I would like to rezone it to PUD, just because it would allow some more, just because we need more flexibility with what is going to be allowed down there to make better use of this land than what it is. And I kind of conform to the neighborhood a little bit better, and a lot of those houses down there, and there's some that are down to 700 square foot, up to maybe 1,400 square foot. So, I'm asking that we get rid of the, the C2, or the C1 and the R2, and just go to PUD and allow some tighter lot lines to create some smaller, more affordable homes with some smaller setbacks that would kind of conform to what's already going on over there.
Okay. Kathleen, do you have any comments?
I guess what I would mention is what, the, the requirements of the PUD would stipulate that there be a 30-foot front yard setback along Broadway and Van Dorn, and a 20-foot setback along Summer Street. That's kind of keeping with the other setbacks along Summer Street, and that the minimum side yards be reduced to six feet. That's similar to what we've done in, in like Deer Haven, where it was budding the older part of town, those lots along there had, had a similar, smaller setback.
Okay, all right. Any comments, questions, concerns from the commission?
I would just, a question for staff, I just want to confirm that converting this to PUD would not alter at all the requirement that each of the six units in this case would need to have a two-car garage and slots for two additional automobile off-street parking spots, so for a total of four off-street automobile spots, two indoors, two outdoors.
Yeah, they, they did not ask for any kind of a waiver on that at all, so that is not part of the PUD, so they are in fact, will be held to, to, the two-car, two-car garage with your parking spot standard. They will, they do, all right, they are proposing that it will be restricted to single-family only, so you won't have duplexes on any of these lots, or a combination of those, they'll all be single-family.
The, the two-car garage requirement in two-car pad, if you will, will that be a difficult thing to have in the design of these homes?
Should not, no, by the time we have a, obviously, two-car garage with a 30-foot setback on, on the front streets there, obviously, we've got plenty of setback there to allow for plenty of parking.
Okay, good. I, I personally think this is a good idea, because I think that is a type of home that would be beneficial to Polk City right now, too. So, I, I mean, if those kind of requirements can be met, I think it's a good idea. Are there any other comments or concerns from the commission?
I have a question, Kathleen, and then maybe Kathleen, can you help me understand on your document on page two, where you say, where we have the C1, R2, and then as platted, and then the proposed PUD?
Yeah, the, the north, the, the three lots that front on, on Van Dorn, I'm sorry, on Broadway, are currently zoned C1, so that's why I included that there. The three lots that front on Van Dorn are R2. And I said as platted, because these are actually platted lots of record and could be used as the platted today. They're platted in like the 1800s or something before you had zoning.
Okay, so that's what the as platted means, is what it's current, could potentially currently be?
Yes.
Yeah, and I had it.
Yeah, that's like kind of unusual column, because we don't normally run into that. I checked with the city attorney on the definition of the platted lot of record, so the current lots as the platted there are 50-foot wide.
And just a comment, when I did go around talking to everybody, getting signatures, it was definitely well-welcome. I don't think anybody wants the, the C1, obviously, on Broadway, I could do a two-story, three-story, actually, I could do a commercial building with two apartment stories above that, which obviously doesn't seem to fit over there at all. And then even on the other side, I did have one person asking about if I was going to do a duplex, and that was the other thing that they were wanting to get rid of, because one or two of those have been put over there, and they just feel like it doesn't quite belong. So, I think the, the single-family approach was, I think, the best fit, just to kind of conform.
I, I think that'll look good, and I think the improvement that's been put into it already, I drive by there every day. Looks really nice already, so. All right.
It looks like you're going to have to get rid of trees. I'm assuming all the trees will come down, and then hopefully, you're going to put more back up.
Yeah, so yeah, that's going to be, so on the, the Broadway side, we've already had to clear some of those out, but definitely some of them were in his... I don't know what he was selling, propane or something else decided there, but they were just overgrown weeds. So obviously those trees did have to go. And then beside the house, there was just, I don't know, it's just so overgrown and it just wasn't in a good spot. So, but yes, no, I would definitely, I think with their city, you have to require to put one tree back in with every house anyway, if I'm correct.
Yep. Yep. That's the three ordinance.
Sure. Okay. Any further comments?
I just have a procedures question, I guess. Normally if we were to make a recommendation to council to approve a PUD, we would also have then a following motion to approve a master plan. As I would understand it, in essence, all we're doing here is making a recommendation to approve the PUD. And then we should specifically lay out the items in the motion on page two of the recommendation that would really be different from the normal residential zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, you could go ahead with that, simply because it's relatively easy with the types of exceptions that they're proposing, but it doesn't necessarily have to have a drawing that gets recorded. The ordinance itself will specifically list that item one through four under option A on page three of the memo. So if your motion include, should include, would be option A with, with all four of the restrictions as listed in the recommendation, unless, unless for whatever reason you're going to change it. But essentially it requires, you know, requires them to subdivide prior to building permits, restricts the uses to single-family detached, establishes the minimum lot size at 4,825 square feet, and establishes setbacks of 30-foot front yard on Broadway and Van Dorn and a 20-foot on Summer. It also establishes a six-foot side.
Probably the best way to do it.
Can I make a comment? Comments?
Sure.
Just for history, that's, that's been commercial, was commercial when I moved out here. And it goes back further than that because there was a doctor's office that now sits out of Living History Farms on that corner right there. And the house that was there was, they sold bottled gas and fuel oil. And they had it, there was a loading dock built alongside out there where they distributed. So that's, that's been commercial for a long, long time.
Well, that goes back to when that was highway coming all the way through there, too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is that the doctor's office at Living History Farms?
Yes, it is, Justin.
Field trip last year.
Yep.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
And after what Ron just said, do we have any contamination of this site? Has anybody checked that? In other words, if there was fuel oil sold there and stuff like that, there could have been spills. And before we okay this for residential use, we should have some, some type of a verification that there's not any, anything there that might be harmful.
Well, the fuel oil wasn't sold, wasn't stored there, but it was, it was distributed from there. That's where his office was. But the propane tanks were stored there.
There was no underground tanks, right?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge. That was there before there were underground tanks, I believe.
Just, well, there could be spills, though.
Yeah.
Does Kathleen know anything about, you know, what I'm talking about here could, could be?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with this site or anything. I think that that could be, we look at that, they already have to plat. So we could look at that maybe at the time of final plating or preliminary plating. And we could, Kyle, a chance to maybe research that a little bit further.
Yeah, I just think we ought to have some type of a certificate that's somebody that's environmentally qualified, say that's a clean site because of what was there before.
Okay. Now that we have this new element here, if we go ahead and prove this as tonight, then is that going to be a subject to? Or do you want to have that done before?
Well, I think it can be subject to. We don't need to hold it up, so.
Yeah. Is it, are we looking for soil testing or what were we looking for there?
I just have to refer back to Kathleen to look at it as an environmental testing or study whatever an environmentalist might recommend or what might even be state law.
Hi, Chris Thompson here, again, just to chime in on this. V-N-A-R keeps lust underground, Vicky storage tank. I guess they have that document online usually. That's something we can just run this by.
Well, I'm talking about spills. We know there isn't an underground tank there. Anytime we'd have that type of commercial there, whether it had underground tanks or not, just to be safe, we'd always ask for some type of environmental testing, just to make sure the site's clear. Particularly when you're digging basements and, and you're putting houses on it. I don't want any liability for the city here by not covering it.
That happened when Come and Go was built because there was a service station there. And where the Creamery is now, they had soil samples there too because that was a service station before.
Yeah, I think typically they're marked as lust sites and then they, you know, have the plumes mapped and they should be shown on some maps if they think they're there now. For just a spill, I think that's going to be a little bit different, you know, and I, be a little harder to address, I guess.
Well, I would presume that they could take some soil samples and see if there's any issues with it. How, how, I think, well, yeah, it's probably something that should be checked just for the, for the owner as well, just to make sure there aren't any potential issues there.
And this site was being used as a residential property for the last, Ron, I'd have to defer to you, but I know.
Hundred years.
It's been used as a residential property for a very long time.
Well, do we have a motion?
I'll be happy to make a motion that we recommend to council approval of rezoning at 206 East Broadway from C1 and R2 to PUD, subject to engineers' and staff's comments dated July 15, 2020. Specifically under recommend, recommendation, recommended action, we are following item A, that is on page three of their assessment. Item A, one through four. Also additionally, due to the prior commercial use, we recommend that Polk City staff assess the need for an environmental soil testing and spill review on this site.
And so you're saying staff assess the need, not necessarily putting it on the developer, then?
Staff assess the need for the developer to do that is the way I've made the motion.
Yep. I would second that.
Okay. We have a.
Can I add one thing to that?
Yes, you may.
I, I think they, in the assessment by the staff, that they should contact our attorney and our attorney should also agree with what their recommendation is. Just so there isn't any, there, there's laws on the books about development of sites where there possibly could be some contamination. But I don't want to just put it on the city staff. I may need to have a more, more review of that.
And I, and I would like Doug's comments rolled into my motion.
Okay. Well, basically what we're saying is city staff and attorney.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll second it.
All right. So do we, so we have a motion for approval to rezone to PUD under the item A with an additional recommendation that the city staff and attorney review the need for further review for contamination on the property in the C1 part.
And I have two seconds.
Two, okay. Well, the first motion, the first second was to, the second motion would be to the amended motion.
Got it.
Are you good, Jenny?
I am.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Roll, well, we got a vote.
Yeah, no.
Roll call.
Sires.
Yes.
Hankins.
Yes.
Triplet.
Yes.
Deets.
Yes.
Olfest.
Yes.
Vogel.
Yes.
All right. This project is also approved. And I, I, I think this is a really, will be a really nice project for that, for that particular property and it will fit nicely with the community down there. I really, I really think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Item number 10, reports and particulars. Ron, do you have any comments?
I just want to share with you guys that, and gals, we've been having some work sessions going over the CIP plan and put a lot of work into it. Staff has really put a lot of work into it. And not only we're coming up with what we feel as needs, but we're also coming up with a timeline of when they might happen and some alternate financing and ultimately financing period. Where before we made plans, but never figured out how we were going to pay for it. I think this is a real big step and it, and it looks real good for the city and how, how things will proceed.
Good. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Is, have anything from city manager or staff?
I have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Kathleen, anything that we need to know about?
I, nothing I can pick up. Thank you.
Okay. Good. And any reports from the commission? Ron, did you have a pretty good turnout at the?
Yeah, just a real quick update. The Polk City Community Visioning Steering Committee held a open house to gather some design inputs from citizens and to share the work that had been done to date. We were hoping to have completed this design open house at the Four Seasons Festival, when we would have a lot more people on the city square. We did have about 70 folks stop by and review what we had done so far and kind of provide some input. I actually worked early in the day. We had like, it was, we were open for about eight hours and I think I worked from hours one through three. So I haven't heard all of the collection as far as comments as yet. We have an upcoming meeting, so that should be consolidated by Iowa State and our landscape architect to, so that we can do some further work and recommendations on that.
Good. Good.
I have a comment for staff. It's on Parker Boulevard and the blacktop's very nice. And, but due to the black surface and the fact that it has curvature to it, and I drive it a lot, I've found that people don't know where their side of the road is. Particularly at night, a lot of people drift over. And I'm just wondering for safety that, if that couldn't be striped with a white dashed center line, or at least considered by Public Works or somebody.
We will look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other comments or concerns? Okay. Well, if not, shall we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Call of favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Well, thank you all. Y'all have a good evening and be safe.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, Kanda.
Bye-bye now.
Bye.